Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the school board meeting of Tuesday, April 9th, 2013, of Columbia Heights Public Schools. We should rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Ms. Palmer, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Landwehr?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Bardell?
Here.
Palmer, here.
Thank you. Our mission statement, Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with support of small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Next on our agenda is agenda approval, adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. And our first item is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Motion by John. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Discussion on the agenda. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion is carried. The announcements, April 16th, Tuesday, 5:30 PM, school board work session here in the district community room. April 23rd, Tuesday, 7:00 PM is the regularly scheduled school board meeting here in the community room. May 14th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM is the regular school board meeting here in the community room. Superintendent Kelly, is there any correspondences?
Mister Chair members, there is none.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to have communication to the board. So at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that administration follow-up. However, the board will not take action at this meeting on request presented at this time. Please be aware of data private information. Does anyone here would like to come before the board? Seeing none, I think we'll move ahead. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda, the minutes of the March 12th, 2013 school board meetings, personnel report, treasurer's report for February 2013, and lane changes. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
I'll second that. Motion by Laura, second by Scott. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion is carried. Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda is reports from members of the board. Board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education, which some of us feel like it was about a year ago. Just kidding. We'll start this evening with Ms. Lee.
All right. Well, I've had a couple of very interesting weeks, and I had the pleasure of going to Capitol Hill to meet with legislators with the MSBA State Board and representing Columbia Heights and other districts. And I've got some information that would be interesting, I'm sure, especially to Lauren and Ted, because it's our report card on the delegate assembly and some of the resolutions that have been brought forward by MSBA and lobbyists for education. I also was in the meeting where the governor had met and gave out some of his proposal, and I'll just briefly give a recap. It's 125 million for special ed, 118 million in additional dollars he'd like to go to the formula, which is $52 per pupil. Early childhood, 44 million, 40 million on expansion of all-day kindergarten, which is, there's some good news there. At least, there seems to be some head nods up at the Capitol for that. Implementing the teacher evaluation, the problem with that, there was no money attached to it, so they are working towards that. 4.5 and shared best practices through regional centers of excellence, and 1 million for guidance, training, and support of preventing bullying. I will be passing this information around, and some of the things that I just want to highlight is that we were able to meet with numerous people, not just education, Minnesota Association of Counties, League of Minnesota Cities, the Association of Townships, and of course, Minnesota School Boards Association lobbyists, and also with the senators and representatives and chairs of the Education Committee, which was really interesting because a couple of questions that I actually had, he couldn't answer. So, which kind of made me pick and prod a little bit harder. So, a couple of things that have really been brought to the forefront that are some concerns and really want to moving forward is the, just the highlights is the increasing of the funding, of course, is 156, the first year, and 162 the second year. We also are looking at the general education formula with inflation, starting maintenance of the teacher evaluation. And I know Representative Bernardi's here, she's going to be speaking regarding some of this stuff, so I'm not going to go eye into a lot of things. The cap on safe school levies, clarify that certain members of public information is private. I think that's really important that school boards and communities realize that when you sign into a committee, into a meeting, that information is public information and anyone can have it. So that is up there to be addressed and to be looked at as far as keeping that data private. A sexual abuse statute of limitations elimination, another one that's a hot button up at the Capitol, and we'll be needing a lot of people to talk regarding that, and I can speak more on that to other people that would like to speak to me about it after the meeting. Just again, a couple of things, it was a real entertaining day and two days, and so then yesterday, we were also, this last weekend, I was also at meetings with the state, and they were talking about the different things. And as we all know, that the K-12 finance came out today, and some of the highlights are all-day, 2% on the formula, the integration levy restored, full funding for all-day kindergarten, equity referendum equalization, and $50 million for early childhood scholarships. My concern with that is that we keep that in the general fund and keep that in public schools. This is out today, the finance is out today. The Senate is hoping to get it out Thursday and be done with it Thursday evening, but they're looking at the Ways and Means Committee looking at it by the 18th. So, a lot of good things up at the Capitol that are leaning towards education, seems like the governor really wants to put public education and public schools in a highlight, so we're looking forward to good things, and the House has done a great job. So that's what I've been doing as far as Minnesota School Boards Association. As far as locally, I have been kind of meeting with some people in town, just talking about things that they see, some things about people commenting about social media. And then also, I had the pleasure of working with the police department, the fire department, and community members at the pancake breakfast at Applebee's for the Heritage Square. So, we need more people to go out and continue to support them and buy some bricks, put your names on it, so you are here in the community forever and ever. So, and thanks, John, for allowing me to come down there and help with that. I had a great time, even though you tried to shove me in the kitchen to only do dishes. But, no, I'm just kidding. You tried also to make me wear an apron, which didn't work. So, but that was a great time. So if anyone wants information, and I would like to at this point pass these out to my fellow board members who would like the information on the stuff that's going through, that we have been pushing for. That's my report.
Thank you. Ms. Palmer?
Well, it does seem like it's been a year since we've been here. I know it's only been a couple of weeks. Most of it, of course, was consumed by the spring break. But one thing that I did manage to attend was they had an orientation over at TIES. And TIES is our technology integration cooperative. We get a lot of services through them, including our web hosting, I believe, and there's probably about 50 different services that they offer. And it's actually owned by the membering districts. They provide training to all of the districts for different technology things, and they can also provide actually training to outside interests as well, which actually helps to lower some of our costs. One of the things that they do over there, which I find so incredibly fascinating, is they develop applications that are specific for school districts. And, you know, things like SchoolView, and they also do all of our record retention. It really was, it was very, very, very interesting, and I look forward to hopefully seeing some more of their applications come through. And it's kind of an à la carte thing, we only pay for what we use, and it doesn't cost us very much. I believe it's a dollar per student for our web services, our internet services, and you can't beat that. So, that was awesome.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Meyer?
I attended the parent meeting at Valley View on the new school uniforms, and the committee put on a great presentation and had samples of the new uniforms, and it was really well received. So, seemed some excitement for that over there. And I was at the March PTO meeting at North Park, and talking about some of the events coming up. The last one, of course, was already last week, the Fine Arts Night, so other than that, that's all I've got.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Landwehr?
I just want to start out, speaking of technology, I don't know if everybody knows that the school board meetings now are on our website, so, you know, if you want to see the school board meeting again, it's available to the public. Also, I attended the Applebee's fundraiser for the Heritage Tower, and hats off to everybody there. It was really, really, really well-run, and I just hope that people will support our community effort there. So, and thanks to the many students that were there, I understand the NHS students, National Honor Society, and the Key Club students helped serve as well. So, that was great. And then I also attended the Chamber Columbia Heights Business Council last Friday, and had school presence there, Director Holmgren was there as well, and Member Larkin. And then also went to a couple Lions meetings, you know, talked to constituents there, and got in to see part of a girls softball practice. The team is really working hard, so looking forward to a good season. And also, we had the opportunity to help volunteer with the band and choir trip and help them prepare for their trip to Tennessee. And I understand everything went really well, and it was a great experience for everybody. So, fantastic opportunity. And then been preparing for the National School Board Association Conference coming up this weekend, trying to pick courses that will benefit the district, and if anyone has input into that, any of the administration or staff would like more information on a course, please let me know, and I'd be happy to do that.
Very good. Thanks. Mr. Larkin?
As Ted mentioned, I also attended the Chamber meeting on Friday. Had the opportunity to go to North Park's Fine Arts Festival on Thursday night. It's a lot of fun, got to see a lot of the different kids between dancing and tenaclean and band, and they have all kinds of, it's quite a show. They did a really nice job. I also was obviously at the pancake breakfast, and when I sat and talked with Member Landwehr at the breakfast, one of the things that I told him that probably amazed me more than anything else was the kids from the schools that were there. I was there right away in the morning, we had to vacuum and clean tables, and I had kids grabbing rags and vacuums, and for a period of time, we had a lot more workers than we did have people eating there, but they just did a great job. They were there from start to finish. I was extremely impressed with the kids, their attitude, and the effort that they put into it. There were many other people as well, you know, people from recreation, police, fire, public works, and then again, this has been a community effort all the way through. So, we're currently brainstorming on trying to come up with another fundraiser, so keep your eyes and ears open, and if you want to help out, it's not just a small group of people will take any help we can get from anybody on that. So, but it's moving around over halfway, over halfway there towards our goal, so we're getting there. Not quite as, it never goes as fast as you'd like it to, but we are getting there. I also am attending the conference this weekend in San Diego, and I am really excited about the opportunity to continue to learn and grow as a board member, and I hope to come back with some really good ideas and things that we can, as a group, help to move the district forward.
Great. Thank you. I'm going to focus my talk just on attending the Association of Metropolitan School Districts meeting on Friday with Superintendent Kelly. And one of the things they talked about was their legislative priorities in 2013, and I'll just give just a few snippets. Their priorities are to strengthen stabilized education funding, of course, talk about the formula, and allow, one of the things, allow locally, like, school boards renew existing operating referendum. Priorities to close the achievement gap, again, has to do with expanding eligibility for English-language learners, funding, and expand schooling, mental health grants, et cetera. And policy priorities having to do with public employee insurance plan and other interesting items. So, with that, I will turn it over to Superintendent Kelly.
Yeah. Go ahead. Thank you. Sorry, I hate to do this, but I don't. One of the things that, going back to the Heritage Tower for just a minute, one of the things that's really unique about it is not only just all the different people involved, but the kids are actually creating all the artwork for the tower for each side of it. And, Kathy, help me out here, but Thursday, April 18th, in this room here at 9:00 AM, they're going to be unveiling the artwork, so people get a chance to see it, and then it goes to whoever's going to be doing the sandblasting, I think, from there. So, I know that the press has been invited, and is an open invitation that anybody wants to see it, to please stop by. So that's again, Thursday, April 18th, at 9:00 AM in the community room.
9:00 AM?
9:00 AM.
Thank you very much. You decided to defer.
That's what I was going to do, I was going to say, Mister Chair members, I've decided to defer my report in essence of indifference of time for tonight, but I can't help mentioning two things. It's usually one, but it's not, tonight it's two things. If you ever get an opportunity on a Monday night to play bingo with the boosters for scholarships at Sarnes, I did that, and it was really fun. I learned 10 different games of booster bingo, and I learned that we no longer use beans and chips, but we actually have dovers. And so, that was great, and it's for a great cause, that's on Mondays at Sarnes. And the pancake breakfast was wonderful, and I want to thank all involved. And this is last week, Principal Busman and Director Stunkel and I became Rotarians. And so, we attended our first Rotarian meeting, and we hoped to get very, very involved as a school district and that organization, so we thought it was worthy of an announcement.
And I forgot one thing that I was supposed to do too, and our own Bill Holmgren and Superintendent Kathy Kelly was down at the Capitol today for AMSD, day at the Capitol, so we appreciate that.
I'll put more of that in my update, so we can move on.
All right. Without further ado, we have a very special guest tonight. Tonight, we're going to get a legislative update from Representative Connie Bernardi. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm pleased to be here. I, first of all, want to say how proud I am to represent Columbia Heights School District. I represent the communities of Fridley, New Brighton, and Spring Lake Park. I grew up in our community. Our first home was, for those of you that remember Nelson School way back when, we were a Black West of Nelson School on Fourth Street, and then my parents moved out to Fourth Street up by Unity Hospital. So then I went through Spring Lake Park Schools and graduated there. So, this is where my roots are, and I'm very pleased to have the opportunity to represent Columbia Heights. And I've already developed a great relationship with Superintendent Kelly and school board members. Some of the school board members have been involved at the Capitol and Bill Holmgren, and we've already been making changes in ways at the Capitol. And some of the things that are happening and that, just excellent outcomes so far, we'll see what happens by the end of the session, Columbia Heights School District has been a champion for this, and has been sharing their story at the Capitol on what they're doing. And I get emotional about this, because it is to your core values in this community to really help every student succeed. And you are investing in all of your learners, but especially in your youngest learners, and you know how important that is, and you've been doing that through general fund, and my work at the Capitol is to try to support you in that work, and I'm trying to get that funded, so that you don't have to be taking that out of your general fund, you're going to get more money to be able to pay for all-day kindergarten. So you guys are champions and leaders in the state on that, and our goal is to help to close achievement gap and develop a world-class learners and workforce, and as Superintendent Kelly has told our committee, you know, that starts with our youngest learners. So I want to thank you for your leadership on that, and it really has made a difference. And it couldn't be a better day for me to come down here to talk with you, because we unveiled our, it's called the Education Omnibus Bill. So it's where we lined up what our values are in the House and where we're going to put our money. And it is amazing how much money that we are investing in education targeted to help us achieve our goals, and I don't have the five goals right in front of me tonight, but it's like, as I said, a world-class workforce, close the achievement gap, address some of the cross subsidies, and we put around $550 million into our education bill. And a lot of the things were already said, but I wanted, I'll focus in on some that you may not be as familiar with, but some of it I think will help Columbia Heights School District, and you can let me know if that's the case. And I've already gotten feedback from your school staff as well as, and teachers have been down at the Capitol, and it's been, it's been great. So, the, I think the most important, as I said, is the all-day K, that's going to put a lot of money into the school. But before I do that, I have a run, which you probably have, we call them runs, we get runs at the Capitol, and we get what school district is being proposed in our bill. And you will be happy to hear that over the biennium, that Columbia Heights School District under our bill is projected to get $2.3 million. I don't know if people were expecting that at the beginning, but I think, I think it's more than people could have ever dreamed of in the last 10 years, and is my recollection of what's happened. So, I just, that would be good for your school district, wouldn't it? Be very helpful. I'm seeing some nods. So we'll see, we'll see exactly what happens, but some of that comes in through different means, and the major one, not the major one, but the foundation is funding on the formula. You, it's 2% each year, and that'll be excellent foundation to help be able to support all the great things happening here in Columbia Heights Schools. And then the all-day kindergarten, fully funding a student for all-day kindergarten. And then we also are including adult basic education and increase on the percentage. Anyway, it's a good thing to be able to get more. I don't know if you guys heard that, we included that. And then also, school lunches. They've changed this year, and we have a little bit of money in there to help support increase in school lunches, and that hasn't happened for like, oh, five or six years. So, wanted to share that with you. That's, all these bills I'm talking about are bills that I've been a part of introducing into the House. And then also, those are probably the main ones I wanted to share with you. I've also worked this year on English-language learner bills, and it might not be ready for pride time this year, but maybe the next biennium, because that had gotten cut back from seven years to five years for children, being able to get them up to speed on their English language. And frankly, the research shows quality programs take seven years, and so I'm working on that. Also, and there's a possibility it will get in here, reading and math core resources, is that something your school district uses? I believe you told me that, yep. And then also, the teacher evaluation, that, I'm working on that, and I represent, I actually have four school districts that I represent, and it's important to know that this is one that's really helped Columbia Heights, because the other school districts I represent have QCOM. And so they're already getting money to be able to do some teacher evaluation and development, and this is one that, it's a basically unfunded mandate. It's a good thing to do, obviously, but there's very specific requirements the school districts must do, and it's going to be piloted and fully implemented in the next couple of years. And so trying to get some resources behind that, so that we don't take teachers out of the classroom to be able to fund, because if you perform all the tasks that are required by the state, then you need staff to do that. You can't just wish it that it's going to happen, it actually takes planning and staff. So that's something that I am working on. And then school trust lands, I don't know if you're familiar with those, a lot of times people don't talk about those a lot, but we are, have you heard that the University of Minnesota is land-grant institution? Well, basically, our K-12 system is a land-grant institution too. Our founders of our state, the federal government, gave us lands to, like, 2 to 3 million, and I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, lands that produce revenue for our students, and then that goes in to help support our students. And we've been doing a reform on this, and it was before they would like, give the schools the money, and then they would take it away. They would give it, and they would say, okay, we're going to subtract it now after your formula. Now we're getting it so that it will stay in, and you'll get the money, which is about $30 per pupil. And then we are developing a means in which we can have an independent trustee to manage that account that's in the best interest of the students. Right now, there's a perceived conflict of interest, it's managed through the DNR. And the DNR gets a lot of revenue from managing these accounts, and it would be very good to have an impartial person who is there in the best interest of the students. And so it's a really positive thing, and I've heard that it, my bill has gotten into the environment bill, so that's a very good thing. That was very challenging, I was very nervous that it wasn't, that it wasn't going to, but that's exciting. So it looks like we're going to, hopefully, if it gets through the whole body, but at least on our side, we have that, get an independent trustee to manage those funds. So I think that wraps up what I want to tell you about. A lot of things were already mentioned about what's going on at the Capitol, but one, there's, we're doing a little bit of property reform, a little bit, helping school districts get some property tax relief on school levies, that's another, another one I just wanted to mention. But as I glanced through here, I think I told you most of them, $5 increase on the safe school funds, that's another one. And then a very, very important one that I didn't, didn't say, but we have saved it, and that one is, they were planning on, it's been sunsetted, the integration levy. And I know that you guys do excellent work on that, and that would be a huge impact on the school district if that was not renewed, and we are proposing to have that renewed. So that's a very important one for the school district. So with that, I'll stand for questions and help.
I have a question. Can you, can you brief us a little bit about the testing policies to replace the high-stakes grad test? Do you know anything about that?
Well, are you talking about the new assessment work? Okay, well, that is a very, I think it's a great direction that we're moving towards. If they're, and just to give you a brief overview, basically, it's doing our assessments differently in the state of Minnesota and aligning them with things that are relevant in students' life. And that's, we don't have the exact test that it's going to be, but it's going to go out for a bid, and there's a selection process, but one likely contender would be like the ACT. So students, it would be relevant to students, and then students would be getting prepared to do that, and the ACT prepares students to be successful in college, and so that would be one. I'm working on a lot of concurrent enrollment, which means opportunities for students to be able to do college while they're in high school, and getting collaborations going, and helping schools be able to get financial resources, the schools, as in K-12 schools, get resources to do that. We just had a hearing today on that, and college in a school. So, it's a very comprehensive program, and it's very collaborative and coming up with ways in which to assess students that's very relevant in their life and that will help prepare them for success.
Any other questions? Yeah, go ahead.
One thing that comes up often is there's so many state and federal laws that we have to follow, and we're bound to. Is there any, are there any proposed legislation initiatives to give school boards more authority at the local level, that you're aware of?
Right. Well, you guys are elected officials, and you're oftentimes over-managed and taking away your local control, and I don't, to be honest, I don't think there's a lot happening to change a lot of those right now. You know, a different way of approaching it is just that one example, the teacher evaluation is not trying to take away that mandate, because I actually think teacher evaluation and development is good, but being able to at least fund it so that you can, you can do it. So that's the closest that I can let you know, at least trying to support some of the unfunded mandates.
Well, that's what often happens, is we get mandates that we can't afford to implement, but we have to a bit follow them.
Yeah, and that's just, and that's just not right. I mean, there's consequences to those unfunded mandates, and it hits the kids in the classroom. So I'm very conscious of that, to make sure that if we do do something, we actually get the funding to help support the schools and the students.
I'm also glad that you're not... I'm also glad that you're, um, not, you know, you're supporting, keeping the integration aid, because as you said, that would be a huge hit to our district. And to be, uh, have that taken away all at once would be a real shock.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Um, is that integration aid going to be redesigned or repurposed? Because the original, um, the original system set up for that is no longer, I mean, we were bound by a court case to kind of, to try to level things out. Um, and since that's no longer relevant, is it going to be restructured? Or is it just going to be going right back to the way, the way it used to be?
Well, that's a good question. I think, I would say it's, it's different now. And there's like two aspects of it. It's, it includes the integration aspect of the, to being able to integrate students, but also, it also pulls in closing the achievement gap. And there's some accountabilities within the law that school districts will be held accountable to make progress towards doing that. So I think that's the biggest change.
I just wanted to take a moment to personally thank you, Representative Bernardi. Um, we've known one another just a short time, but I feel like we've really worked together well, and I want to thank you for that. Um, Representative Bernardi has really worked on issues for us that mean a great deal in this district. The, um, working on all-day, everyday kindergarten for us and recognizing that we have been doing it since the year 2000 and actually inviting us down, letting us testify and tell our story that for our district, it's essential. It's not an enhancement was, um, very rewarding for us from the standpoint of getting it out and having then requests from other districts to talk about how we even did it. So I want to thank you for recognizing and, um, uh, getting us down there with your bill and also in your bill, which, um, we are very proud of, is that you recognized early the littlest scholars, as Kristin Stunkel would say, um, that we shouldn't forget about them either, the three and four-year-olds. So thank you for that. Um, the teacher evaluation piece, I literally was sitting in a meeting and Representative Bernardi's office called and said, can you come down and, um, testify on teacher evaluation? Because all of our other districts had Q Comp and we did not. And I, that is very precedent, uh, that set a precedent for me that I haven't had before. I want to thank you for that, because in this district, we've just kicked off our teacher evaluation task force. And we don't know how much it's going to cost us, but we know that it will definitely need a lot of financial support and has fiscal tails for us. So thank you for battling that for us. That was very nice. Um, the recognizing that for a quarter of our district, um, which, students, which are EL students, that it takes longer than five years, um, for them, um, and that the financial support would in, uh, support their learning. Thank you. If it doesn't happen this year, we would certainly be down, um, to support you and your efforts. And another time, I know that we have both a director and a coordinator very, um, committed. And, um, they're going to present some wonderful results tonight, yeah, in the area of EL. And, um, I, I also want to say that I'm glad that, um, Member Lee brought it up. The, looking at the grad tests and the way they currently are and looking for a different way, a real-world way to measure, um, performance at high school is, um, refreshing and probably a very logical way to go. And I want to thank you and, um, members of the House for doing that. I don't know what the Senate will do, but I certainly want to say that Bill and I were down and we even attended the press conference and heard both sides. We heard both the majority and the, um, minority reports on the education bill. But what was also refreshing is that both sides worked collaboratively. And both, uh, both Democrats and Republicans said that they were working collaboratively, which is just a very nice thing to see again down at the Capitol. So thank you for all of that.
Oh, you're welcome. I'm glad you mentioned that. I've, I've only served in the minority before I came back to the Capitol again this, on the second round. And I, um, that's the spirit in which I work. I like to bring people together and to be collaborative, because that's where we get our best ideas. And I'm very happy that that is really the spirit of the legislature this year. I don't know if you've seen it in the public or have felt it, but it's very, we, I, I couldn't figure out, why are we working until eight, 10, 12 o'clock every, I'm, I literally, nearly every night during the week. And what I realized a couple of weeks ago, it's because we're hearing everybody's bills. It used to be the majority party would get their bills heard, or just some people get their bills heard. And we're hearing everybody's bills. And that's why we're working so long. And I'm like, well, that's a good thing. And it's okay to be tired then. That's a good thing.
I just want to kind of piggyback on what Superintendent Kelly said. Uh, thank you very much for everything that you're doing down there. Um, just in, in looking at this, you're authoring four bills, um, presented to the, to the House and Senate are over a thousand. So, I mean, that's what was told to us yet, the other day. So it really is nice to see your name out there and that you're working for kids. Um, because I think that's really what it's all about. And all of these things that you are working very hard towards is going to bring from the smallest to the largest. I think the grad test is, is huge. Um, and, uh, day before yesterday, they were saying it was the ACT that they're going to have every student start, that's where they want to go, um, towards that. So I think that's great. Um, but again, thank you for working so hard. Because it, in a little time, I've been really more involved in this. It's like mind-boggling. Um, so, but education looks like it's being noticed and being brought to the forefront, which is, is, is huge. And it's, it's so very, very important. So again, thank you and to the other representatives at the Capitol for at least acknowledging education and continuing to work for us.
You're welcome.
Um, I, I, I also sit on the Board of 916. I was wondering if you've had an opportunity to meet, um, oh my gosh, her name just flew out of my.
Connie Hayes.
Superintendent Connie Hayes.
I, well, actually, she was there to, she was there today.
Okay, 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 yeah. Because, um, some of the concerns that, I, I've only been on the board for a really short period of time. Um, but, um, one of the things that, um, that she had mentioned, um, is often in the education bills that the special education districts are kind of left out of the equation. And they have a lot of mandates and very little resources and not a whole lot of way, I mean, they're, pretty much they're, you know, doing $2 worth of work with a $1.25, you know? And, um, some of the rules that are in place that school districts can do, um, like, um, uh, there's one of the levies. I, again, I, I wasn't prepared for this question, so I'm trying to kind of muddle my way through it. Um, they, they can only do, uh, they can't do any of the levies that a regular school district do. They have to levy through the district. Is there a way to make sure that, that they can also operate? Because a special education district, it is, it is vital for a district our size, because we just cannot provide the type of programming for all of these students. It just, the, the resources would be enormous. So being able to work collaboratively, to work as a collaborative together, to be able to provide these services across multiple districts, um, is, uh, is definitely a necessity for a district our size, you know? Because we can't, we can't build a special room for a single student, you know? They can, they can work on that. And one of the things that they are going to be doing is they're going to be adding a new facility, which is going to be very nice for us, because it's going to be right in plain. It's going to shorten our travel time. Um, so just to keep in mind that with a lot of this stuff, that there's also the special districts involved as well. It affects us through this district, because we do have to fund it, you know, going both ways. And one of the other concerns that they had, that she had had as well was, um, with the, uh, some of the new rules as far as restraint are concerned, and I'm sure you're familiar with that. I know there's a, uh, there's a little bit of, um, of a pass on that, so a couple of years before that goes into effect. But I know that, um, in, in the interest of preventing, um, a student from harming themselves or others, that sometimes they use prone restraint. And, um, that is going to go away and that ability to be able to, to protect that student and the staff may be taken away. So something to, to keep in mind as well, so just.
Yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad you.
Don't forget 916.
No, I'm glad you brought that up.
The special education districts.
And Superintendent Hayes did talk about bonding issues with that school district, special legislation. So I'm, I want to go back to, uh, Representative Isaacson, I think, is leading on that. And I will lend my support to his bill to help with that. So I'm glad you reminded me about that. And is, is the occupation, at Spring Lake Park, they have the occupational emergency care. Was that through 916 or was that separate? Is that for all the students in 916 or is it just for the Spring Lake Park School District? Something they did? Yeah, is that just through Spring Lake Park? Okay, okay. I just remember it being connected with 916 when I grew up, but I don't remember if that was correct or not. What, there's two things I haven't mentioned. We didn't, we, um, uh, Councilmember Lee mentioned it was the, we call it the mini-mines and scholarships. And I actually hadn't signed on to the bill yet, because I wanted to make sure that our school districts could actually get that funding. And what basically it goes to the parents and the parents can choose where to send their child to a quality, uh, early childhood program. And it was difficult for school districts to get it because of the timing and they didn't see the money. And so that has now been worked out and I plan to, uh, support that. But I just, I like seeing it being aligned with the school districts, because the kids have gotten the routine of coming to school on time and getting used to the snacks and the, how the, how it's run around here and how to interact with teachers and how parents interact with teachers. And I just think it's a really good alignment. So I'm very supportive of especially that part of the program. And then also the, uh, we didn't talk about the paying back the schools. The schools had, uh, over, over $2 billion borrowed with them to balance, to balance the budget. And the public really was not very happy with that in the long run. So we've really made an effort to pay that back and we still have, we've paid back up to, now we have $800 million to pay back. And we have a proposal to pay, fully pay back the, the shift. So that's a, a positive thing that's happened this year. I'm just, I'm just really proud to be a part of this legislative session and the collaborative work we've done with the school districts and sharing and, uh, highlighting, spotlighting what Columbia Heights is doing and other school districts and being able to expand that statewide. And I, I know I've already said it, but I'm very proud to represent Columbia Heights School District. You guys have lots of challenges and lots of opportunities to really, um, make a difference in the lives of students. And you are setting an example for the rest of the state and what you do. So as you guys have successes in closing the achievement gap and sending kids off to post-secondary education, to trade schools or to colleges, I want you guys to let me know about those, because I like to brag about you. So, um, I want to share those stories at the Capitol.
I just want to say one other thing. When you talk about the, uh, scholarships and the, uh, uh, where it's going to go, um, my concern is this, is that it stays in that, it does kind of gear towards the public education. Also, how, as you, as you research this, look at how they shift it. Uh, because from what, that was kind of the questions I had is, is there, are they going to be able at one minute go from here and then shift it down to a daycare and shift it back? And who is actually going to receive those scholarships and how is that going to be determined? Those are some of my concerning questions regarding that. Um, it would be nice to be able to continue moving this forward, but again, with support. I know you said earlier you were going to look into it. And I, just in my knowledge, I know that, like I said, Saint Paul just said yesterday that they had, you know, had not seen that money. So it, it is a concern of mine and, and I, you know, it's one of those things that coming for our littlest guys that we need to make sure that we support them here at the public schools.
Yeah, and as much as I'm into education and supporting student learning, I don't want to just get on the bandwagon because everybody else is.
Right.
I want to make sure that it's the best institutionalized, the best, and it's the most supportive of getting our kids ready and stuff. So thank you for being supportive of where I'm at on that.
Yeah, no, and I totally understand you not getting, you know, on that bill. But I, I just am concerned that we make sure that the language says, is clear on where that, those monies go and those grants go.
Yep.
All right, well, we certainly want to be mindful of your time. So we really appreciate you coming down here, Representative Bernardi. And we look forward to the things that you're doing down there and, and, uh, we will keep in contact for sure.
Thank you, and I'm planning to, when my schedule frees up a little bit, visit North Park. My pastor and his family goes to that, his children go to that school. And so I'm going to visit with his wife Karen. Um, their last name is Hard White Hugim, I believe, and, uh, visit with their daughter at the school. So I'm looking forward to that. So thank you for the invitation and, uh, please do keep in touch.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, speaking of North Park, um, next, we're going to have, uh, building, uh, vision cards from North Park Elementary. And we have Dwayne Burkas, Director of Teaching and Learning, Jeff Sosik, North Park Elementary Principal, and Tanya Sterm, North Park Elementary Dean. Welcome.
Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. I'm pleased to be here with our third and final elementary school, uh, with Principal Sosik and Dean Sterm. We are, uh, in our district using very similar curriculum across all of our school, our three elementary schools. But each of our schools takes on its own personality and they have their own twist on how that works. Um, especially excited, I know that, uh, both of them will talk tonight about some of the, the special things that are going on at, um, North Park, uh, this year. And, uh, I'm sure that they'll talk, uh, soon about their plans for the future. Um, but as you know, STEAM is something that in our strategic plan is there for us as a district, K-12, that we would like to be able to take, uh, science, technology, engineering, arts and math, and really make that part of the experience of kids going through our schools. So we're very pleased that, uh, North Park is leading the way at that K-5 level of being able to, uh, figure out how do we give that experience to kids at the, at the young ages? So that when they go on to the middle school and on to the high school, they build on a, a real firm base. And so proud, very proud to be here with both of them and excited by the work that they do and the, the ideas that they are posing and, and have may come to life. So I'll pass it to you, Tim. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Burkas. Mr. Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, good evening.
Good evening.
We will move on immediately to among the most important numbers. Um, you will see over the past four years, um, a significant spike in enrollment at North Park. I know we've been enjoying a similar spike at all three of the elementary schools. Um, if you'll see, like in 2010, we already down, we were already down, all the way down to 429 students on our October 1 child count. Um, this year, we were at 495. Um, so we saw a precipitous gain last year and, uh, that gain is continuing, um, this year. And, uh, we're happy to have all those kids. We're happy to be bursting at the seams. It's a very, very, um, excellent challenge to have. Um, looking at our demographics, I'd like to focus most upon, um, our free reduced lunch population. Um, that's risen by 10 points this year. Um, and so that's something that has gone right along with our enrollment gain. Um, so we are commensurate with the rest of the district now, in fact, that we are, uh, even with Highland. Um, so, but from a demographic standpoint, uh, that's, that's an area where, um, we're all looking quite a lot alike now. Um, looking at EL and special ed, we do have the largest special education population in the district. Um, uh, a lot of that is because we, uh, house three of the setting three programs. Um, we have two separate, uh, DCD programs and also an autism program. Um, and then we, of course, have, have many of, uh, special ed, special education students, um, in our attendance area as well. So we're at 16.4%, um, which is, uh, close to twice some of the other schools. Uh, but that's, that's the reason why. Um, our EL population has grown significantly also, um, over the past couple of years. So we're at 35% now, um, which is, uh, quite commensurate to the other elementary schools. AYP data, um, you know, there, uh, it's, it's interesting to look, um, at math for one. Um, when we looked at the MCA3 happening, um, and it's the middle, uh, the, uh, the middle bar there under math. Um, when that was implemented, you did see a dip, but you see us rising back up in year two. We're kind of learning more about the test and how to better prepare our kids. Um, the score of 61% proficient is actually higher than the state average, so we're, we're proud of that. Um, we did have a dip in reading this past year. Then we went from 74% in 2011 to 62%. Um, and that's, that's just, uh, attributable, I mean, a different set of students. Um, and also, we're using some different strategies this year to, uh, to try to get us back up closer to the 75% mark than the 62% mark. Uh, I'm especially proud, um, of our science scores. Um, to me, science is the culmination of all of the skills and just wrapped into one. Um, and you can see that, uh, significant gain from year to year. Um, 61% is about 12 points higher than, uh, the state average. Um, and, uh, another thing that I'm very proud of, which, which is hidden, um, in this data, uh, is the, um, how we've closed the achievement gap in science. Um, in particular, uh, our Latino students, both our Latino students and our EL students, um, had higher science scores than, uh, the white students in all of our adjacent, adjacent districts. That's something I'm very proud of. And very much of that, of course, uh, is because of Mr. Stan Ross, who was our district teacher of the year and also a semifinalist for, uh, state teacher of the year, much, much deserving. So as we move on, we're going to take a look at the scorecard now. Um, we're going to focus on strategic directions A and B. Um, looking at A, I, I like turbocharging. That's my favorite two words in the entire strategic plan. Sometimes I have a hard time getting past that. I look at turbocharging and then it's, it gets me excited. Um, so, um, I am going to actually pass the reins over to Mrs. Sterm to go over the turbocharging portion of our strategic. portion of our strategic plan scorecard.
Thank you. Good evening. We are turbocharging all kinds of things at North Park and I'd like to draw your attention to A four initially, the use of effective teaching strategies. Mr. Sausick and I have been in a number of classrooms specifically looking for student engagement and have found that up to eighty-nine percent of all of our teachers are using some really, really innovative strategies to ensure that our students are being engaged and it's been really fun to look at what engagement looks like in the classroom, what it sounds like in the classroom and the variety of shapes and forms that that takes. Our next one there is A seven, the presence of multi-tiered interventions for academics. That's something that we've been doing at North Park for some years now and are just refining and looking at a variety of ways to ensure that our kids are really, that they are moving forward in both math and reading as well as other content areas. And the last one I'd like for you to look at right now is our A fifteen, our parent engagement piece. We had ninety-two percent of all of our families attending conferences. We have lots and lots of families who come for EL Family Night, Fine Arts Night, which several of you attended, our barbecue. Those are really big events and we get a lot of great feedback from our, from our families that they enjoy being present at North Park, that they feel that they are a part of our community and that they are welcome in our school and we're very proud of that fact.
Now we'll move on to the innovating portion, portion B. It's very data-driven, there are data that are, that are easy to collect because we've been collecting them for years. Areas of high concern and those are our growth in both math and reading. They were down years so when I looked back at our levels of growth in the previous three years, we would have been progressing, the progressing column in each of those years. So we definitely know how to be there and we plan on being there this year. Also, some things that I think I'm quite proud of and we all are at North Park is percentage of students by student group. Again, it's, we are closing the achievement gap and in all of the areas where we look at closing the achievement gap, we are at at least a progressing level and again, it's something we're proud of. I have spoken of the MCA and we are in areas of high concern but our goals this year are to get us at least to the, back to the baseline if not to the progressing levels. And then finally, I'm, I'm quite proud of all three of these areas and when we look at the achievement gap, again, we're at the baseline. When we look at the largest achievement gap that we have amongst all of our groups and also when you look at behavior, that's something that I think has steadily been improving across the district and I'm especially proud of B fifteen. We are at the vision level when it comes to suspensions. Suspensions are just simply something that we don't very often do at North Park. If students are not in school, students don't learn. So SMART goals literacy, cut and dry. In spring of 2013, our goal is that sixty-five percent of our students will meet or exceed their growth targets in reading and additionally, at least sixty-eight percent of our students will score to proficient level on the MCA reading. Additionally, in math, sixty-five percent of our students will meet their growth targets on the map and seventy percent of our students will be proficient on the MCA. And in science, we're going to keep growing. We plan for at least sixty-four percent of our students to be proficient in science this year. In behavior, we can, we have the goal of continuing to see our behaviors decline. It is our goal that time to think room visits will decrease by ten percent and that the difference between student groups and referrals out of class will continue to be at least in the progressing column and very soon hopefully hitting the vision. So initiatives, we're going to talk of some, some, some fun new things this year a little bit now. You should see there is, it's a copy of the book that we've used, our leadership team at North Park has used to help guide our implementation of, of, actually I should say transformation of teaching and learning into really focusing on 21st century skills for our students. One of those 21st century skills is, is being excellent stewards of our earth and as you know, last winter we adopted a composting program with the help of Commissioner Cordyak who's in our picture there. And so when I first came to North Park nine years ago, we used about five barrels for garbage at breakfast every morning and we used eleven barrels at lunch with our new composting program and really being mindful of recycling as well. We were down to less than one barrel a day combined in our cafeteria. At this point, our garbage, just since we've implemented the composting, the garbage output has decreased by forty-four percent so that sixty-one percent of all the waste leaving our building is either compostable or recyclable. Pre-K, that was an addition last year and it just seems like they've been there forever now. First of all, the staff that Director Stunkel brought aboard at North Park are, they're just wonderful and have embedded themselves into our culture seamlessly. They work very closely with our kindergarten staff to make sure that the transition from pre-K to kindergarten is a simple one and I think the, the data that I'm most impressed with is that one hundred percent of the pre-K students, the four-year-olds last year that are in our attendance area did enroll in kindergarten at North Park. 21st century learning, I'm sure that many of you recognize the P-21 framework here and this is going to be an area, a time of the presentation where I'm going to hand things back to Mrs. Sterm.
So we're using this visual just to remind you that the P-21 framework is what's guiding our 21st century learning at North Park and particularly we are concerning ourselves with the four Cs, creativity, communication, collaboration and critical thinking. As you know, we have our second grade learning studio was our big project last year and has been an enormous pilot this year but it's not the only place where 21st century learning is happening. At North Park, you'll find it throughout. That includes professional development. Right now, our third grade team is working really hard to sort out just how they'll meet the needs of those second grade students next year and so just today they were in fact working with our technology integration specialist, Matthew Silva, doing some very pointed work to address that issue and they're really excited about it which is fun to watch. It's fun to watch our mix of new and veteran teachers getting together and being excited about something that's new to all of them, at least professionally speaking. We also see a lot of 21st century learning in our Setting Three Special Ed classrooms. If any of you did attend, our fourth grade Wax Museum show, the guy in the lower left here was, he's, he used the iPad which then they found a way to tape to a lectern in order for him to present his, his Wax Museum project. So you push the button on his body and then he would push the button on the iPad so that his spiel could roll. It's been so much fun to watch 21st century learning at North Park become more than just technology. Technology does help us to move that 21st century learning forward in a lot of instances but it is so much more than that and that's been great to see transforming. So our last item tonight is to highlight that 21st century learning part pilot, excuse me, in second grade with our seven-year-olds turning eight years old to see what a day looks like for them. So as you're watching this little video, I'd like you to pay particular attention, if you would, to the sounds of learning and to the movement of learning and if that surprises you, please take note and feel free to ask questions around that or anything that you're about to see.
Oh, it's so fun. You get to redo stuff and you get to do fun things in second grade and have so much fun.
And you get to do STEAM a lot.
What's STEAM?
It's when you close to, like, this week we do our plans. We did like later last time so I'm going to do other stuff.
What do you like about doing STEAM?
It's fun. It's like a lot of stuff.
I'm doing the word right here about Antarctica so I'm going on Google Earth but I'm just showing you where Ethiopia is.
What are you doing down here?
I'm doing skills.
And how are you doing your skills work?
I'm doing, I'm going to go, I'm going to try to make words on chicken.
No? Tell me about learning in here.
I'm a competitor, not okay to say competitor.
What does that mean?
That we can do the better case.
Do you enjoy the challenge?
Yes.
What?
I said yes unless it's too challenging.
How do you know if it's too challenging?
How do I know if it's too challenging?
Yeah.
Is that if it's like really, really challenging, that it's not fun sometimes.
How do you know if it's challenging enough? Did you hear my question?
Yeah. How do I know when it's, it's challenging enough is it's a good amount of challenge which makes it fun.
Why are you working in the cave?
Because it's my quiet spot and I need to concentrate and the only thing to concentrate is in here.
Do you choose this on your own or does someone else choose it for you?
I choose this on my own.
Sometimes do you choose to work in other areas of the learning studio?
Yeah, just sometimes.
Tell me when you choose a different area to work in.
I choose a different area on Friday and yesterday, wait, yesterday I went to the
That's just the perfect way to end. If any of you know this child, that's him in a nutshell right there, what a wonderful kid and he was excited because he got to meet Ricky Rubio the night before. So anyway, that is a few moments in the life of our pilot and I'm sure that you noticed some differences in the sounds of engagement and the space of engagement and how engagement looked. Do you have any questions for us?
Please.
I just have a comment. What I noticed is that students were learning in all the different ways of learning, you know, tactically, through, through visual learning, through sound and that's great. That's, that's good education.
Thanks Ted.
I'm really glad you noticed that. I think that even those among us who feel that we're quite progressive tend to, and I'm talking about myself here, we tend to be, have our, our certain ways of thinking of what it does look like in a classroom. So thanks for noticing that.
You bet. Thank you.
All right, well, nice presentation. Thanks coming in. Appreciate you sharing.
Thank you. Thanks for the time.
Keep up the good work. All right, next on our agenda this evening is Annual Measurable Achievement Objectives, AMAO for English learners and tonight we have Dwayne Burkas, Director of Teaching and Learning and Jane Reardon, EL and Family Involvement Coordinator.
Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. We're pleased to be here together, Jane and I. Jane is one of our partners up in teaching and learning who works very hard with our English learners as well as our family outreach and so last week about this time, I think it was, we were over at Highland at the REACH graduation and it was great to see that event but tonight we're here to really talk about the results that we get in at a different time than the MCAs for our EL learners. Believe it or not, we just received in the last few weeks our results from last year from the 2011, 2012 school year for our EL students and so that, this information is new to us and we wanted to bring it to you and report on how our EL program is, is doing and so I want to pass it to Jane to, to talk about that.
Thank you Dwayne. Director, excuse me, Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, thank you for having me tonight. As Dwayne mentioned, I'm going to talk about our EL achievement in Columbia Heights. So last year, Minnesota joined what is called the WIDA Consortium which is a consortium of 27 states that have common standards for EL placement tests and assessments. So it's, it's really nice to be able to have a common vocabulary with districts in 27 other states around our, our English learners. So when we get a student from one of those districts, we know appropriate placement for them. They have five standards which include social instructional language and then the language of science, social studies, language arts and math. And they bring with them a can-do philosophy around English learners which focuses on the strengths that those students bring to the classroom rather than a deficit model of what they don't have when they come to school. And it, you know, seeing that their errors are developmental and that we support what can they do is a, a really nice fit for our district. So they're all about academic language so I just wanted to go through what, how they define that and I threw up that quote by James G. because I think it encompasses really nicely how academic language, you know, we want our students to learn the content of math and science but we, we need them to be able to talk about it and write about it and listen about it. So according to WIDA and research, academic language, we look at it basically at three levels. So can they use specific and technical language to talk about the content areas? Are their sentences comprehensible and understandable knowing that errors are developmental and are okay? And then when they talk or read or write, can they do that with varying levels of complexity? So last year was our first year with the test that WIDA has us do which is the Access for ELLs. And all of our EL students were tested in the academic language of math, language arts, social studies and science as well as the social instructional language. And we tested them in group tests with the reading, writing and listening and then the speaking test is a one-on-one teacher-student test with a rubric from WIDA that we use. So because it was a new test and they had to do a bridge study with our last testing data, we, as Director Burkas said, we just got our data back. So they give us our Annual Measurable Achievement Objectives which is basically AYP for ELLs and they base it on our access test, on our progress and growth in English language proficiency, our proficiency and then they look at the reading and math scores for the EL subgroup for MCAs and then other measures as well which I'll talk about. So the first AMEO measurement is progress towards English language proficiency so we want to show that our students are growing each year as they progress through our program. And as you can see, the state target was around thirty-one percent and our progress is at forty-four percent. And as you can see, the state target was around 31% and our progress is at 44%. We're really proud of that. The second AMAO measurement is are our students proficient? So based on how our state is defining proficiency, are they meeting that expectation? And the target for this year was 8% and we hit 19%. And when we talk about language proficiency, what we're really talking about too is can they be successful in the general classroom? Can they be successful in the MCAs? And language is no longer a hindrance. And these are the other measurements that they use in order to determine our AMAO status. So our participation in our high stakes testing, our proficiency, our attendance, and then the graduation rate. And I wanted to mention about the graduation rate, it's lower than the target, but they do multiple measures, the four, and five, and six year, knowing that we have students who are older, who come in, who are at a lower language of English proficiency. They still have the four years to, to get their credits and to get a diploma, but they can skew the cohort. So, so those are great numbers and we're really extremely proud of our students. I have the privilege of being able to tell you about this, but this really is about our very dedicated and hardworking EL teachers. We have very supportive principals and extremely supportive district with Superintendent Kelly and Director Burkas and, and all of you as well. So we're very proud of our students.
So are we.
Well, you're proving it can be done.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm wondering, who sets the state targets? Is that through the Department of Ed?
The Department of Ed, yes. And we worked with WIDA to set our own, to Minnesota State, our targets.
I mean, they're just overwhelmingly good. So, I mean, I think we're just speechless, so that they're that good. Very, yeah, absolutely.
We were very proud of the EL department and the teachers and the students. When the federal government came in last year to study just how good you were and how you were getting the results. But I have to say, when these came across on the email, I was blown away. I said, we've got to get this news out to the board and to the community on just how well we are really doing in this market. It's wonderful and speechless is, is, it's almost unbelievable that, that we can take them in such a short span of time and break down the language barriers to learning. So thank you and thank the staff.
I will.
Job well done.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Next on our agenda this evening is we're going to get some information on our athletic fee schedules. And tonight we have Bill Holmgren, Director of Finance and Operations, Mary Bossman, Columbia Academy Principal, and Melissa Carey, Assistant K-12 Activities Director.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I hope you're having a good evening. It's been a lot of great news this evening and very informational, so glad to be here. And I also want to recognize that the work we've been doing this evening, Activities Director Mark Corliss and Teaching and Learning Director Dwayne Burkas have also worked with us very closely on, on this work. You also, you always know the strategic roadmap is in front of us. We are specifically focusing on A and F this evening, expanding and turbocharging, as North Park said, what works well, and also remaining fiscally responsible. So last year, we had the 2011-2012 Blue Ribbon Task Force that made recommendations. That was a group that came together to look at our activities, athletics, and arts programming model and how we might be able to make improvements. And they came up with four goals to increase and have high levels of participation, high levels of success, that we can also create personal development through students' participation and also build their skills. They also did, made a philosophy statement that we would provide an attractive and relevant activities, arts, and athletics program, which provides for student development and success through a balance of participatory and competitive opportunities. I'm not going to go through each one of these, but in several areas, they set indicators of areas that we might want to look at improving and altering our program. And so I'm going to go through a couple of those that we have been working on in this last year. The first one, the Blue Ribbon Task Force suggested that we form a leadership committee similar to the Heighten the Arts Committee. That leadership committee has been named the Activities Advisory Council and that group will meet quarterly and it had its first meeting already in February. The membership of that is parents, community members, the Park and Rec Department, coaches, activities advisors, teachers. And so we feel like we've got a really good group of people who are working on that. Also directors, administrators, and the Activities Department. We also are seeking to collect data on student participation and cost. And before we put together this proposal to you tonight, Assistant Athletic or Activities Director Melissa Carey looked at who were our students who were participating this fall and what were the amounts that they were paying to participate? And who was or was not paying to participate in our activities and athletics. We also then took the other goals that were put in front of us to provide busing for students after practice to increase participation. And that bus started, the activities bus started on March 13th as the spring sports started. That also, that bus leaves Columbia Academy at 5:15 and it leaves the high school at 5:30. And it takes any students home who are participating in athletics, in the arts, and in activities. And we're really excited about that. So we are bringing to you the governance question this evening, a proposed fee structure to increase opportunities for student participation, to improve consistency in how fees are established, communicated, and collected. And we want to provide a fair, consistent, and fiscally responsible activities fee structure. This is the proposed fee, activities fees structure. I tried to give you some comparative analysis as well. So you can see what the current athletics and current football fees are. And then in the third column, you'll see the proposed athletics fees, including football. So that you see that it is different for students who are full pay, reduced lunch, and free lunch, because we want every child to be able to participate, but we also want every child and every family to contribute to the program. So I don't know that I need to go through each one of those. It is a little bit different between the high school and, which is in the lower part of the graph, and the upper part of the graph, which is our middle level. You can see that at the middle level, our students do not participate, or they don't pay for participation in activities and they don't currently and they wouldn't next year. Okay? And then I'm going to ask our Assistant Activities Director, Ms. Carey, to speak to those, a couple of asterisk parts at the bottom of the page.
Well, thank you, Principal Bossman. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Superintendent Kelly, and the board. I just wanted to take a quick minute to show you a couple of the notes there that are on that post chart that you'll be reviewing. The first one, you'll note that we have grades six through eight shown for current athletic participation. And one of the reasons we have that is because we are very fortunate that we have two programs that sixth graders are eligible to participate in when it comes to athletics. Because they're interscholastic leagues that we normally participate in, sixth graders cannot participate in those. But we have the opportunity to participate in two community leagues for both boys' football and girls' lacrosse. So that's why you see sixth grade included on there as well. The second note is if you look under activities, you'll see that we do charge a fee for some of the activities and they're listed there at the bottom. And the reasoning for that is those activities all have costs associated with them for transportation, entry fees, things like that. So that is the reasoning for those items that you'll be considering on the chart.
What's interesting to note is that in this new fee structure with the analysis that we've done, we would actually see an increase in the amount of revenue that we would generate. And the bill will be able to address that if you have questions. But we have some additional considerations that we want you to know that we've been thinking about. And that first, that the fall sports fees will be based on students' free and reduced lunch status of the previous year, so this year.
And to address the challenge of knowing whether or not a student is in that free or reduced status, utilizing the Fee Pay feature through TIES, that will automatically let the parents know what their fee is, because it ties in with that and will tell them specifically if they're on free or reduced, what their reduced activities or athletics fee is.
We also want to establish a review process. So if there is any discrepancy or if a parent is concerned that they, they might think they might have been charged a wrong fee, that the Activities Director will establish that review process.
And we also still want to provide opportunities for scholarships for those who have cases of exceptional hardship, understanding that at times, though we've reduced the fees, those still might be high for some families.
And that those scholarships will be available through our school's social workers, that we really want to engage them in the process. They know our families, they know how to access assistance, and so that'll be a great way to bring in our help.
And then we're also encouraging families to go ahead and utilize Fee Pay and pay online. And one of the things that we have done to really encourage that is there used to be a convenience fee for families to go on and utilize that feature. And as of February, that fee has gone away. So we have seen an increase in families utilizing that.
Lastly, the question that the Activities Advisory Council and the Blue Ribbon Task Force talked about is what if students participate in multiple activities or athletics? And after careful review, we really feel that for each student at each fee level, so free and reduced lunch or full pay, once he or she has paid for two sports or activities per school year, any additional sport or activity for that student would be at no additional cost for that school year. So we really want to encourage participation. We also, there are no activities fees charged to K-8 students and we didn't consider a family cap. We haven't done that in past practice. So we'd like to give consideration to our, our first suggestion, which is you participate in two and a third one is free after that.
Okay. A couple of other things that we would like to share with you. If this is in fact approved by you, the board, we would like this fee structure to be in place next year for the 2013-14 school year. Another exciting piece that we're also working very hard on is to try and get an online registration system going, to try and speed up that process a little bit and not be bogged down by so much paperwork. So we're really hoping to pilot that project here in May when we take early fall registrations and then have it fully going by fall here in August, when we're right in place for those fall registrations.
So in front of you then is our proposal that we will bring back to you on the 23rd, that we are hoping to create an increased opportunity for students by creating a fair, consistent, and fiscally responsible activity fee structure for our students to participate in activities in Columbia Heights Public Schools.
All right. Questions, comments?
I just have a question. Could you just explain a little bit with the reduced fee structure, how you expect the revenue to increase?
We had a lot of discussion in the task force, you know, not this lesson. And right now, we really aren't expecting a lot of increase. So when we looked at decreasing our fees for our free and reduced students, we really see that now it's actually changing. So that's why we're seeing, we're willing to deal with increasing fees. At the same time, I mean, we don't, when we look at our total for the year, we don't expect very much to increase. So if this really did increase, it's not going to hurt us anymore when we look at our general fund. But at the same time, I think we really are going to see some increased fees. Number one, they're lower. Number two, it's been very convenient.
When you were looking at doing this study, did you, I think you're trying to capture some of those people in between, maybe that maybe aren't free and reduced or they're considered full pay, but they maybe that is a lot of money to be spending. Do you think you're going to capture some of that? And do you think you'll get more kids that maybe, that are, the transportation piece is going to pick it up as well as far as getting more people involved? And do you have a guess on what your projections are be as far as increased in participation? I think it's great. Just any guesses or did that come up in discussion?
I think it was a study of we're going to, we're going to provide it and see, you know, I know, I'm seeing kids get on the activities bus at the academy and I'm not sure, I haven't been up to the high school to see.
I see kids, yeah.
Yeah.
The last numbers I have, we're averaging well over 30 kids every day on that bus, where these kids get on. I think we're going to see increased participation.
And I think it's great. I think it's also going to hopefully lead to, you know, more parent engagement as well, more kids who get involved in your activities, hopefully the more parents you draw in as well. I think it's great.
I think the other piece that it encourages kids, if they want to participate in three different activities throughout the year, they can do that. The third one is free. And that can be if they're going to be in the musical in the spring and they're going to be in football in the fall, they're going to be able to do something else there that, that's going to not have a fee for them. And that's going to help the families, especially if they've got two or three students. So we also think that that's going to be a benefit for those folks who are in between.
Do you then anticipate collecting the fees for everyone with this system? I mean, to be fair, in order to participate, you need to pay the fee. That's only fair, right?
I really think we see more buy-in from the students and from the families by actually paying.
Right.
I think a lot of pluses. I mean, the fee is low for our free and reduced.
Right. Plus the fact that they don't pay the fee, other people are subsidizing them, which, which isn't fair. I do, I also agree that to get more students involved is, is a great goal. This, these activities just enrich their, their experience here. So whatever we can do to encourage them to be involved, the better.
All right. Questions coming? Sounds like a good plan.
Thank you. We'll be back.
All right. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our information item is National School Board Association NSBA membership. The board will be presented with information on National School Board Association membership. The information that I'm supposed to share is our dues are up again and this is for the 2013-2014 school year. The dues are up a little bit, not substantial. Let me look here. Yeah, $150 basically compared to last year. So I'm certainly, if the board believes that we get value out of the National School Board Association, I'm, you know, certainly willing to support it. And I know, I'm planning on attending, I am attending this year for a first time in many, many years. Anxious to see what it's all about again. So, and I know, heard various comments from Ted and Missy and, and others who've attended. And, and yeah, there's always some things that you may not like, but there's more often than not, good things that you enjoyed or little nuggets of wisdom that you can impart on the rest of us, so. Yeah, go ahead.
One thing that I think is particularly valuable about NSBA is it gives us a chance to see what the best practices are throughout the country. And I, as a district, we, we've committed a long time ago with the best practices and implementing them. So it's our opportunity to see not only what the best school boards are doing, but also what the best superintendents are doing and all throughout the administration of school districts. So I don't know where else you get to see that, the way we do through NSBA.
Just a couple of things about NSBA that I've learned recently. There is what they call the new NSBA coming out, where it is going to be a lot more federal, working towards education and for districts across the United States. So it's new, we do also have So it's new, we do also have a representative from Minnesota that sits on the national board, which is, which is big too. And we are actually, the regional committee is meeting here in Minneapolis in July. So it's bringing some highlights here. So the Nationals, I think, are going to represent education better than what we've seen even in the past. And I think we'll see a different, kind of a different field now, but I think even next year, you're going to see a bigger and better NSBA. And I think CUBE is coming up, and they are to, you're going to see some differences there also. They're trying to mesh a little bit better together and bring that forward. So I think on a federal level, I think it would be nice to see if some of the federal dollars come back to education, and that's some of the things that they're working for. So it is, I think it's a good investment, and I think that we've brought a lot of things back from Nationals. You know, every, I think every board meeting, if you go back on minutes, you'll see somebody has mentioned something that they learned at the national school board level and been able to bring back to the district and at least talk about, plus the networking alone is huge, and technology pieces we're seeing come out of there are just major. I'm really looking forward to going to the site visit I'm going to be going to on Monday, which is a K-6, and it talks all about technology and kids and how their one-on-one learning and with iPads. So I'm really looking forward to that. It's one of my favorites.
All right.
I'm going to make the motion to move this forward.
Oh, it's just an information item.
Is it an information? Oh, I thought it was, sorry, I thought it was.
That's okay. You can move it forward.
I jumped.
Forward to the probably next regular board meeting.
I'll move it to the next board meeting, yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it.
That's why you come, you talk about iPads, we just saw in the video, the iPad use, so there you go.
Yeah. Really neat. All right, well, thanks you guys. All right, let's move on to our action items. First on our agenda is the 2013-2014 school calendar, and Nicole Halaby, Director of Student Services.
Thank you, Chair Bardell, Members of Board, Superintendent Kelly. At the last board meeting, which you said feels like about a year ago, I brought you information on, just to refresh your memory, it's a committee every year that I chair that involves parent members from every single building, staff members, licensed and non-licensed, administrators, activities, et cetera, et cetera. And we take the state regulations and the local district mandates and put them all together with the contracts and develop a calendar. I'm pleased to say that this calendar was relatively easy to put together because of some of the constraints, and Labor Day started nice and early, and Member Landwear had asked about whether we had discussed getting a waiver to start before Labor Day, and we did talk about it, but we thought since it's on the 2nd of September this year, it really wasn't something we needed to discuss any further until possibly next year. So I'm asking you to approve the 2013-2014 school calendar.
Motion move forward.
I'll make that motion.
Missy. All right. Motion by Missy, second by Ted, any discussion on the calendar?
I just want to thank you for considering possibly moving it. And, you know, it makes a lot of sense to adjust our calendar to provide the best education. If we can do that by starting early, it makes a lot of sense to me.
All right. Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you so much.
Next on our agenda, our seniority list approvals. Provide seniority list for custodial, clerical, food service, education assist, education assist employees, and lunch duty monitors. Tonight, we have Elizabeth Rush. Welcome.
Good evening. Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the school board. According to their master agreements, the seniority lists for education assistants, lunch duty monitors, custodial, clerical, and food service employees are to be distributed every year to the members of the unit. A copy of each list was given to you in your packets. These were circulated, and it was the first year actually for the lunch duty monitors to be placed on their own seniority list, and that was something that came out of a recent agreement with SEIU. And so I'm here tonight seeking your approval for the seniority lists in those four groups, education assistants, along with lunch duty monitors, custodial, clerical, and food service employees.
We have a motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Laura, second by John, any discussion? Yeah, go ahead.
Just wondering, has there been any comments about the list, or has it been approved or generally accepted?
There were no challenges.
That was going to be my question. All right, any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion as carried. All right, our last scheduled action item this evening is rescission of an unrequested leave of absence. And Elizabeth?
On March 12th, the board approved a resolution proposing to place tenured teachers on unrequested leaves of absence, attached to your packet as a resolution rescinding the proposed placement of one of those teachers. We're asking you tonight to approve a resolution to rescind that placement. This came after the district worked with a teacher who in turn worked with the Minnesota Department of Education to reinstate a license that was omitted on his, on his license, and since then, we've been able to place him. So again, I'm here tonight asking you to rescind that resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Missy, second by Ted, any discussion? All right, it is a resolution. Ms. Palmer, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer?
Aye.
The Landwear?
Aye.
Mr. Larkin?
Aye.
Mr. Bardell?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
That resolution has carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any additional board topics this evening? Yeah, go ahead.
I would just, I would love to get a copy of the PowerPoint on the English Language Learner, because I think that's something we should all be very proud of and publicize, and I like to have the details.
Put it in the update either this week or next.
Thank you.
All right.
I actually have a couple of things here.
Sure.
One, one thing is too, is I would like to share with members of the board, this is actually a pack, a personalized district list of all the services and stuff that we, that we get through Ties. Earlier, it was mentioned that we're going to be, we have the fee schedule online, there's a lot of other things in here, and this actually shows what Ties offers, and the checked boxes are what we actually do through Ties. We get a huge value. I was wondering if maybe we could make a copy of this and present, and get it out in the board packets?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I'm, I'll hand that over to you. And the other thing coming up too is North Park just had their fine arts night. Valley View and, and Highland are also going to have their, their arts nights and concerts coming up. So if you've got students going to those schools, I know Valley, Highlands is this Thursday, and I believe Valley View's is the following Thursday. I'm not entirely sure about the date, so something to keep in mind. Definitely get out there, it is so much fun to see those cats and, and the great artwork, and they love to drag you around and go, I did this, I did this. So it's wonderful stuff, so just keep that in mind, that's a great activity coming up.
I think Thursday is Highlands?
Highlands is, I know Highlands is Thursday, I have students over there.
What time does that start?
On the, oh, the 11th, yes.
What time does that start?
It starts at 5:30. There's a concert and the fine arts, it's all. And of course, I've been informed by my son, we practically have to be there when school lets out. So, because he is really excited. He is home practicing right now, so.
All right, well, as Ms. Palmer suggested, check the school calendar on the website and see what other activities are going on in the schools, and please take advantage of it. You won't regret it. Comments?
Our website is getting more and more valuable, so.
Oh, absolutely.
Don't miss it.
Yeah. All right, I'll adjourn this meeting at 8:40. Thank you very much.